Are we good?
Yep.
I'm going to call this meeting to order. Can everyone stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance
to the United States of America and to the republic which is named one nation under God, in the temple with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on the agenda, the reading and approval of the minutes from the last Board of Commissioners meeting, which was January 25th, 21. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes? Do I have a second?
Second.
And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opportunity for the board or opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only. Anything, Trace?
No, we did not receive any emails.
This is the first reading of ordinance 21-0023. Donnie?
Yes, you want me to read the ordinance or Brian going to read it? I'll read it, okay. An ordinance of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, ratifying and authorizing charges, expenses, and fees associated with the collection of delinquent real estate taxes by the Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County do hereby ordain as follows. Resital's 1.1, Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau is a division of the Office of Lackawanna County Commissioners created pursuant to section 5860.201 of the Pennsylvania Real Estate Tax Sale Law and is responsible for the collection of delinquent real estate taxes owed to certain taxing districts situated in Lackawanna County. Pursuant to section 7193.5 of the Municipal Claim Tax Lean Act, the Pennsylvania General Assembly has permitted the Tax Claim Bureau of the several counties to adopt and use the procedures set forth in the Tax Claim Act, in addition to the procedures set forth in the Real Estate Tax Collection Act. Effective October 1st, 2016, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners authorized the Tax Claim Bureau to utilize the procedures contained in the Tax Claim Act through Lackawanna County Ordinance Number 244. The Tax Claim Bureau and the City of Scranton are parties to an intergovernmental cooperation agreement and memorandum of understanding whereby the City of Scranton has appointed the Tax Claim Bureau to collect its delinquent real estate taxes, and the Tax Claim Bureau has agreed to collect the City of Scranton's delinquent real estate taxes and to file tax claim liens for delinquent real estate taxes on behalf of the city pursuant to the Tax Claim Act. Both the Tax Claim Act and the Real Estate Collection Act authorize the addition of charges, expenses, and fees in connection with the collection of delinquent real estate taxes in Lackawanna County hereby ratifies and/or authorizes the schedule of charges, expenses, and fees herein described. Section 2, charges, expenses, and fees. Charges, expenses, and fees to be added when applicable during the course of collection to unpaid real estate taxes. Lackawanna County hereby ratifies and/or approves the following fee schedule for the collection of unpaid real estate taxes pursuant to provisions of the Tax Claim Act. Interest rate pursuant to section 7.7143 of the Tax Claim Act, 9% per annum. Statutory notice of fee shifting pursuant to section 7106 of the Tax Claim Act, 16 cents. Second notice of the fee shifting pursuant to section 7106 of the Tax Claim Act is $1.50. Perfection and service of the tax claim lien is $8. Clerk of Judicial Records filing fee for the tax claim lien is $53. And the Clerk of Judicial Records filing fee for satisfaction of a tax lien claim is $8. The effective date this ordinance shall become effective 10 days following enactment. Now, this is the first reading, so we don't have to take any action today, but we'll have the next meeting. And again, this is just an ordinance adopting fees for the Tax Claim Bureau to impose with the collection of delinquent real estate taxes within the city.
Okay. I guess we'll move on to resolutions. 21-0037, approving the current payables. Brian?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County's general fund numbers, 316215-316687, inclusive totaling $3,226,488.59. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $6,103,212.99. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February 3rd, 2021. Madam Chairwoman.
Do I have a motion? Well, first of all, does anybody have any questions for Brian? Do I have a motion to approve 21-0037?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0036, declaration of a disaster emergency.
Yes, Madam Chairwoman. Whereas on or about February 1st, 2021, and February 2nd, 2021, northeastern Pennsylvania was deluged in a massive winter storm that left accumulations between 15 inches to more than 24 inches of snow that had caused or threatened to cause injury, damage, and suffering to the persons and property of Lackawanna County. And whereas the winter storm endangered the health, safety, and welfare of a substantial number of persons residing in Lackawanna County and threatened to create problems greater in scope than Lackawanna County may have been able to resolve. And whereas the Chief of Staff of Lackawanna County, the Chief Executive Officer of Lackawanna County did declare, with the consent of the Board of Commissioners, a declaration of local disaster emergency pursuant to subsection 7501B of the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Services Act 35PACSA, subsection 7501B. And now therefore, we, the undersigned Commissioners of Lackawanna County pursuant to the provisions of 7501 of the Emergency Services Act and 1.1-302T of the Lackawanna County Home Rule Charter do hereby ratify said declaration of emergency and do hereby declare the existence of an emergency existed on February 1st and 2nd of 2021 in Lackawanna County. And further, we ratify the actions of the Lackawanna County Emergency Management Coordinator to coordinate the activities of the emergency response, to take all appropriate action needed to alleviate the effects of this disaster to aid in the restoration of essential public services and to take any other emergency response actions deemed necessary to respond to this emergency. Emergency, still further, we ratify all actions by authorized officials of Lackawanna County to act as necessary to meet the exigencies of the of this emergency, namely the employment of temporary workers by the rental of equipment, by the purchase of supplies and materials, and by entering in such contracts and agreements for the performance of public work as was necessary and required to meet the emergency. All without regard to those time-consuming procedures and formalities normally prescribed by law, mandatory constitutional requirements except accepted pursuant to the provisions of the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Service Code 35PACSA 7501. This declaration shall take effect immediately upon passage to 1.3-310 of the Lackawanna County Home Rule Charter. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February 3rd, 2021. Madam Chairwoman, this was in response to the Governor's Declaration of a State of Emergency.
I'm in the Commissioner meeting.
Our officials up at the EMA sought to send this declaration down to PMA immediately, which we did yesterday after speaking to all three Commissioners. Mr. Fredrickson drew this agreement, or this disaster up, this emergency declaration up, and it was sent to the PMA.
And Commissioners, what this will allow us, this will allow Lackawanna County to apply to be eligible for any state or federal emergency funding that we become available as.
Right. This isn't that we declared an emergency. The state did, and all we were doing is, all we're doing is giving us an opportunity to collect money from the state or the federal government for engaging in this state.
Correct, Commissioner, yeah. It'll make us eligible for funding.
Yeah. Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve 21-0036?
So moved.
Do I have a second? On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0024, approving the hazardous materials response grant.
It resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the submission of the Hazardous Materials Response Fund Grant for the Department of Emergency Management. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February 3rd, 2021. Here to speak on that, Commissioners, is our EMA Director, Rich Barboish.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
This is the Radiation Emergency Response Fund Grant in the amount of $9,119. I'm sorry, this is the Hazardous Materials Grant. I've got two things on here today. Hazardous Materials Response Fund Grant supports our hazmat safety program, which consists of eight hazmat stockpile sites throughout the county which have hazmat mitigation supplies that are available to any emergency service agency in the county that has a hazmat incident. The amount is yet to be determined. This is just the application. The state determines the amount. Historically, it's been between $15,000 and $16,000.
Does anybody have any questions for him? Do I have a motion to approve 21-0024?
Motion.
Second.
And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0025, approving the Radiation Emergency Response Grant.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the submission of the Radiation Emergency Response Fund Grant for 2021 and 2022 with the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency in the amount of $9,119. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February 3rd, 2021. Madam Chairwoman, here once again is Director Barboish.
Commissioners, this is the RERF grant, as it is known, our Radiation Emergency Response Fund. It supports our radiation safety program within the county in support of the host counties for the nuclear power plant, being Luzerne and Columbia County. This is in the amount of $9,119, and it provides for the nuclear power plant exercise overtime pay, supplies for that, that exercise, et cetera.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Barboish?
Nope.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve 21-0025?
Motion.
And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0026, approving a PMA grant agreement.
It resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve and enter into a grant agreement with the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency for the 911 statewide interconnectivity funding grant agreement in the amount of $40,232.77. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February 3rd, 2021. Once again, Director Barboish.
Commissioners, this grant provides for connectivity to Monroe County. The amount of that out of the grant is $26,720.77. There's $11,400 for the northeast core. That's text to 911, provides that funding. And there's also $2,112 out of that grant for GIS data sharing to Monroe County to match up the borders on the maps in the event of a borderline dispatch.
Any questions for Mr. Barboish? Do I have a motion to approve 21-0026?
Motion.
And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0027, approving CDBG modifications.
It resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna do hereby approve the submissions of modifying the following community development block grant programs to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. For the federal fiscal year of 2016, the modification will delete the clearance and demo line item for the Archibald Borough Clearance and Demo Project. They will transfer the remaining funds, $40,000, to the water sewer improvement line item for the Archibald Borough First Street Water Sewer Box Culvert Replacement Project. For the federal fiscal year of 2016, the modification will transfer $23,260.61 from the Dummore Borough Housing Rehab Single Unit Residential Line Item to create the street improvement line item for the Dummore Borough Chestnut Street and Sidewalk Pavement Improvement Project. For the federal fiscal year of 2016, the modification will transfer the remaining funds, $46,003.35, from the completed water sewer improvement line item for the Jessup Borough Delaware Enhanced Street Sanitary and Storm Sewer Project. These transferred funds will create the Public Facilities Other Line Item for the Jessup Borough Memorial Park ADA Restrooms Project. For the federal fiscal year of 2017, the modification will transfer $30,968.66 from the Housing Rehab Single Unit Residential Line Item to create the line item street improvements for the Blakely-Mott Haven Section Block 3 Street Improvements Project. For the federal fiscal year 2017, the modification will transfer $25,302.54 from the completed water sewer improvement line item for the Taylor Borough Jefferson Street Storm Sewer Project Phase 2 to create the Public Facilities Other Line Item for the Taylor Borough Building ADA Vestibule Door Project. Be it further resolved that the county has complied with the terms of Pennsylvania Act 179 and has met all citizen participation requirements in connection with the above-mentioned revisions. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February 3rd, 2021. Commissioners here to speak upon that is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Brenda Sacco.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Morning.
This resolution states that the county is submitting a CDBG modification request for the years 16 and 17 on behalf of Lackawanna County Entitlement Municipalities, Archibald, Blakely, Dummore, Jessup, and Taylor to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. The request moves money from completed or ineligible projects to projects that are current or near completion. The resolution is a requirement of the CDBG program, which ensures that there is citizen participation in the use of the funds. Any questions?
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0027?
Motion.
Second.
And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0028, approving CDBG revisions.
It resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna do hereby approve the submissions of revisions of the following community development block grant programs to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. For the federal fiscal year of 2016, the revision will transfer Archibald Borough 2016 funds, $26,821, from the Housing Rehab Single Unit Residential Line Item to the Water Sewer Improvement Line Item for the Archibald First Street Box Culvert Replacement Project. For the federal fiscal year of 2016, a revision will transfer Clark Summit Borough 2016 funds, from the Housing Rehab Single Unit Residential Line Item to the Street Improvements Line Item for the Clark Summit Borough ADA Audibles Signal Project. For the federal fiscal year of 2016, the revision will transfer Dixon City Boroughs 2016 funds, from the Housing Rehab Single Unit Residential Line Item to the Street Improvements Line Item for the Dixon City Bowman Street Sidewalk and Street Reconstruction Project. For the federal fiscal year of 2016, the revision will transfer Dummore's 2016 funds of $79,743.39 from the Housing Rehab Single Unit Residential Line Item to the Street Improvements Line Item for the Dummore Mill Street Sidewalk and Roadway Reconstruction Project. For the federal fiscal year of 2016, a revision will transfer True Boroughs 2016 funds of $6,400 from the Housing Rehab Single Unit Residential Line Item to the Water Sewer Improvements Line Item for the True Borough Charles Street Storm Sewer Improvement Project. For the federal fiscal year of 2018, the revision will transfer Dixon City's Borough 2018 funds of $5,843.95 from the Housing Rehab Single Unit Residential Line Item to the Street Improvements Line Item for the Dixon City Bowman Street Sidewalk and Street Reconstruction Project. Be it further resolved that the county is complying with the terms of Pennsylvania Act 179 and has met all citizen participation requirements in connection with the above-mentioned revisions. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February 3rd, 2021. Commissioners, once again, here is Director Sacco.
Again, this resolution states that the county is submitting a CDBG revision request for year 16 and 18 on behalf of Lackawanna County Entitlement Municipalities, Archibald, Clark Summit, Dummore, Dixon City, and True to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. The request moves money from completed or ineligible projects to ones that are near completion or that are currently happening. The resolution is a requirement of the CDBG program, which ensures that there is citizen participation in the use of the funds. Any questions?
Do I have a motion to approve 21-0028?
Motion.
Second.
And the question? All in favor? Resolution 21-0029, ratifying the submission of a RAC grant application on behalf of Gentex Corporation. Brian?
Yes, Madam Commissioner. Ratifying the submission of redevelopment assistance capital program grant application with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on behalf of the Gentex Corporation. Whereas the Gentex Corporation project entails renovating and upgrading existing buildings owned by the Gentex Corporation to expand their facility in Lackawanna County, located at 324 Main Street in Carbondale, Pennsylvania. And whereas the County of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for the redevelopment assistance capital program, RACP funds, as a source to finance the project. And whereas the Gentex Corporation has proposed that the county assist the Gentex Corporation in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. And whereas the county desires to assist the Gentex Corporation in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. And whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chair of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these redevelopment assistance capital program funds. And now therefore, be it resolved that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to file and accept an application and award in the amount of $1,500,000 to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a redevelopment assistance capital program grant on behalf of the Gentex Corporation for the project. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February 3rd, 2021. Commissioners, once again, Director Sacco.
This resolution is authorizing the filing and acceptance of the redevelopment assistance capital program grant application with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on behalf of Gentex Corporation in the amount of $1.5 million for renovations and upgrades to the facility located in Carbondale to provide additional improved space to create and retain jobs in the U.S. government contracted facility. Any questions?
Nope.
This is a pass through, right Brenda?
Correct. Correct. We would administer on their behalf.
We would receive 5%.
1% in the RACPs. The LSA, which is the next resolution, we get the 5% admin.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0029?
Motion.
Second.
And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0030, ratifying the filing of an application for the local share grant account, for the local share account grant program.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. Ratifying and accepting the filing of an application with the Monroe County Local Share Account Grant Program to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the Fellowship House Foundation Project. Whereas Lackawanna County is interested in promoting economic development and revitalization within Lackawanna County. And whereas a grant application has been submitted to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development through the Monroe County Local Share Grant Program on behalf of the Fellowship House Foundation Project, Scranton, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $250,000 to perform property acquisition, construction, and architectural and engineering services. And whereas Lackawanna County is willing to accept the administration of this application, and whereas Lackawanna County does, or hereby authorizes the chairperson of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to this Monroe County Local Share Account Grant. And now therefore, be it resolved this third day of February 2021, that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners does hereby ratify and accept the submission of this application to the Monroe County Local Share Account Grant Program on behalf of the Fellowship House Foundation Project. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February 3rd, 2021. Finally, once again, is Director Sacco.
Thank you. The LSA grant was previously due. Therefore, this resolution is ratifying the submission of the Monroe County Local Share Account Grant Program application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development to add one additional agency application. In total, Lackawanna County has submitted 20 applications on behalf of various agencies totaling over $2.7 million in requests. The LSA grant program continues to provide support and enhance community and economic well-being for communities and important projects across Lackawanna County. So anyone have any questions?
Nope.
Do I have a motion to approve 21-0030?
Moved.
Second.
And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0031, approving.
Thanks Brenda.
You're welcome. Thanks, bye.
Approving a plan of financing by the Health and Welfare Authority to undertake a project for the Howard Gardner Charter School.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. Approving a plan of financing of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority and declaring that it is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the County of Lackawanna for the authority to undertake a project for Howard Gardner Multiple Intelligence Charter School. Whereas Howard Gardner Multiple Intelligence Charter School has requested the authority to issue its revenue notes in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $5 million to finance, refinance, or reimburse a project furnishing and equipping of an approximately 11,000 square foot addition to the existing facilities of the borrower. Whereas the approval by this board, as evidenced by this resolution, will enable the authority to finance the project without imposing any liability on the county or its citizens or taxpayers with respect to the notes. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna does hereby resolve that, number one, the issuance of the notes by the authority is in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $5 million. And the use of the protocols of the notes to finance the project is hereby approved. Number two, it is hereby declared desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people in the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, to have the authority issue the notes for the purpose of financing the project. Number three, the foregoing action of this board shall not in any way pledge or obligate the credit or taxing power of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, nor shall the county be liable for the payment of the principal of, or premium, if any, or interest on the notes or any other costs related thereto. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February 3rd, 2021. Madam Commissioner here to speak upon that is Attorney Brian Kozlanski.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Good morning. This is our typical health, safety, and welfare resolution whenever the authority assists in a borrower in doing a tax-exempt financing. One of the code provisions is that there's a public hearing for any tax-exempt financing. We have, the authority did hold that, nobody attended. And this is, you know, no liability on the county, no funds of the county. It's a straight bank loan, but it allows them to do it on a tax-exempt basis. This is the same approval and the same project that we, that the Commissioners approved in February of last year, but the project was delayed. And this is only, the approval is only good for a year, so unfortunately, we have to redo it. But it is the same project, the same dollar amount. We just have to redo the process.
Does anyone have any questions for Brian?
No, a lot of things were delayed this year, weren't they Brian?
A lot of things were delayed, sorry.
No, no questions.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0031?
So moved.
Second.
And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bye Brian.
Thank you everybody, bye.
Thank you.
Resolution 21-0032, approving the poll worker rates increase. Brian?[1710.33]
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the poll worker rates increase to start in 2022 as follows. Judges of Elections will go from one seventy to two hundred. Majority and minority inspectors will go from one twenty five to one fifty. Clerks will go from one twenty five to one fifty, and the constables will go from one twenty five to one fifty. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February third, 2021, Madam Commissioner, two items to note about this. We cannot raise rates for these individuals during this coming year because they're all up for election, these seats, the judges of elections and minority, majority inspectors, everything that's on here is up for elections in this year, and by law we're not allowed to propose raising their their fees during an election year when their seats are up. So these affect June first, 2022, for those who are elected in 2021. Another item to note very quickly, I think that the commissioners are very aware of this, but I don't think anyone else else is aware of it, that our Director of Voter Registration, Mary Mendalas, has retired. Yesterday was her last day, and she did come in during the the snowstorm, as it were. Director Mendalas started in Lackawanna County in nineteen seventy four in the voters' registrations office as a part-time worker. She went full-time in nineteen eighty and was appointed the Director of Elections in two thousand and one. During that course of time, she has been involved with twelve presidential races, five as the Director of Elections, including this past years, that everyone here that's watching and was involved in the elections knows that it was quite the undertaking, and we appreciated her staying on for one more year to to help with that that election. It was something that no one saw coming with the pandemic and the write-ins. Initially, when we hit her and I spoke in January of last year about the primary election, I recall her saying that, you know, with the new laws put in place where people can just mail in their vote, she's expecting a couple thousand extra as opposed to the three to four thousand that she would get on a normal year with the absentee votes. Clearly, well, that was not the case when the pandemic hit, and we, you know, received almost thirty thousand in the the primary and almost fifty thousand, forty five thousand or so in the the general election. He and her staff, as you guys all know, did a tremendous job, not just in this past year, but for her entire career. She will be sorely missed. She is not only a great professional and did a great job, she's a friend. I've known Marion most of my adult life from from the years that I was trying to run for office in in the past couple decades, and she was always there to guide you through the 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 way of doing things the the proper way, even when you were a newbie coming in and and not knowing how to file paperwork, she always took the time to teach you. And she will be sorely missed, but the commissioners are appointing Elizabeth Hopkins to take her spot as a director and and Glenn Hawley as a deputy director down in voter registration. So, and Marion will always be available by phone. We are going to miss her, but we are looking forward and congratulating not only her on her retirement, but our new director and our new deputy director. And that's all I have, Commissioners, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to say congratulations to Marion as well.
Yeah, I I do too. I I know Marion for over four decades. She came in as a cedar worker. I think that was that in the seventies, Brian? I think it was.
Yes, sir.
Seventies, eighties, yeah. She's she's been a a great person, truly professional. She's done a phenomenal job there, and she will be missed, but again, she's she's around. We were glad for her that she can retire, but sad to see her go.
I will say she was a tremendous help for me as well when I started, and I know we're in good hands with Beth and with Glenn, so congratulations to everybody.
Yeah, great. Okay, thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve twenty one dash zero zero three two?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution twenty one dash zero zero three three approving area agency on aging amendments.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging Amendments with the Wright Center for Community Health and the Greenhouse Project as attached here too. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February third, 2021, Madam Commissioner here to speak upon that is our Director of the Agent Jason Kavulich.
Hi, Jason.
Good morning. The first the first amendment is for the Wright Center, that's to continue our our mobile testing and soon-to-be mobile vaccine program with the Wright Center. This is an additional allocation from the county to help with the P P supplies and also keeping the mobile units sterile. We bought some equipment to make sure that the vehicle is kept safe for all our consumers. The second amendment is for the Greenhouse Project, it is to continue virtual programming. The Greenhouse Project has been doing a tremendous amount of programming for us online because the the healthy aging campuses have not been able to be open for the normal hours. Some of their programs are hitting to between two and three hundred people per program, so that that's pretty good numbers for a for an agency this size and a small grassroots organization.
Does anyone have any questions for Jason?
I just want to touch on something real quick, Commissioners. Jason has been working tirelessly to get our sixty-five-year-old and above population vaccinated as quickly as we can. He is developing, right now, that we are meeting on tomorrow with a lot of the providers that are giving the vaccines out. We have recently, we we sent out, you know, to all of the the individual places that are doing vaccinations, and we have received word back from the majority of them, or two or three that haven't responded, that we're going to, Jason's forming a a call center run by, you know, paid for by the Lackawanna County Commissioners and and Jason's department to help these sixty-five-year-old seniors get appointments. So that is in the works. We're trying to put everything under a a uniform umbrella, and he has been working tirelessly, to say the least, to take care of this situation, and he will be updating the three of you by Friday on exactly where we are and when we we're going to have this plan to go forward.
You do a good job, Jason.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Does anyone have any questions for Jason?
Not yet.
Do I have a motion to approve twenty one dash zero zero three three?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution- Resolution twenty one dash zero zero three four entering into a professional services agreement.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a congregant meal provider professional services agreement on behalf of the Area Agency on Aging with Mets Culinary Management Incorporated for the fiscal year of twenty twenty one through twenty twenty-three as attached here too. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February third, 2021, once again, here is our Director, Jason Kavulich.
Mets provides our congregant meals and right now our grab-and-go meals in all the healthy aging campuses and the satellite senior centers in Lackawanna County, they do an excellent job. For the first time in four years, they've come to to the table asking for an increase based primarily on the the amount, the containers they use to supply the meals to our older adults, the cost has gone up exponentially, and and that's a very real, real problem, and it's something that's easily researched and proven to be correct. So they asked for a modest modest increase for the first time in four years, and we think it's 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 a fair number, and it's it's still a very good price that they offer to us for the product that we get in this this community.
Any questions for Jason?
No, they do a a great job. They are the provider at the airport, and they they really do do a phenomenal job, and they've been very good to work with, and I think it's more than reasonable that, under the circumstances, that we we do this.
Jason, you want to just touch on real quick where the meals go and how it affects our community?
Actually, this is one of the more important things that we've done during COVID as as a community and as an organization. Mets provides us grab-and-go meals, so that means when an individual comes to a senior center or healthy aging campus, their meals, usually five to seven at a time, are are given to them, they take them home, and then they have them for the week. This was really important during the height of the pandemic when when people were were, you know, sheltering in place. It it's helped keep food on the table for a lot of our older adults, and it's also it's also relieved some of the anxiety that they have of going out into the community to get groceries. So we saw a big spike. You know, we were doing on average roughly about five hundred meals a month. There was a point in time we were doing twenty-three hundred of these meals a week. So it's been it's been a very much utilized program, and it's very important that we keep it going for the older adults in our community.
Exactly.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion for Resolution twenty one dash zero zero three four?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution twenty one, thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jase.
Resolution twenty one dash zero zero three eight awarding the arts and culture program grants.
Here's Madam Commissioner, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby award the twenty twenty-one Lackawanna County Arts and Cultural Program Grants in the amount of a hundred and two thousand dollars as attached here too. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February third, 2021, here to speak upon that, Madam Chairwoman, is our Director of Arts and Culture, Maureen Woodwigan.
Hi, everybody, thank you. So, as you know, it's been a crazy year, each year that you, can you hear me? Each year the county funds program grants, which means they can be, these are organizations that are nonprofits that can use this funding to pay for programming and operational costs. So with the pandemic, we had to kind of restructure these and vet them a little differently. Some projects did not happen at all, some programs, some happened in the real world, some happened online, some people did some of their programs. So we had a panel and working with the Commissioner's Office, we assessed these, and these are the amounts that the organizations in our program stream will be receiving for two thousand twenty-one programs.
Does anyone have any questions for Maureen?
No, I I just want to, you know, everyone know that there is some of the programs that weren't funded in this, there were specific reasons for that because the money wasn't out, wasn't spent because of COVID. But we are more than open to revisiting all of those issues and all those situations, and we'll do whatever we can to continue to support the arts and culture, and we're 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 always here to to talk with you, Maureen, or anyone else.
Yeah, no, thank you. This was not, we had to balance taxpayer funding with helping our organizations because they are suffering, but, you know, COVID has really made my department go a little bit one day at a time, and we've done the best we can. So, yeah, we are always open, and things may change, and we're going to have another round of our creative COVID grants in the spring. So, yeah, please, the office is always open.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty one dash zero zero three eight?
So moved. Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Maureen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ma.
Resolution twenty one dash zero zero three five appointments to the Workforce Development Board.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Workforce Developmental Board with terms to begin immediately and expire on January thirty first, twenty twenty-three. Dr. Thomas Bailey's, the Administrative Director of the Career Technology Center of Lackawanna County, sitting in as the Youth Program Representative. Mr. Drew Simpson, Pennsylvania Regional Manager, Eastern Atlantic State's Regional Council of Carpenter, sitting in as the Union and Apprentice Representative. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February third, 2021, Commissioners, these individuals currently sit on the board, and Director Sacco would like to have them reappointed to the board.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty one dash zero zero three five?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chris?
Yes.
Did you say aye?
Yes.
Okay. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
I still have no agent or no emails at all from the public.
Thank you.
Commissioners, other business, does anybody have anything? No?
Nothing today.
Okay, so I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.